But they have their own reserves, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So we got one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand. That's what-
Hey, Buck.
That's what we got in reserves.
Yeah. So we're halfway.
Yeah.
About a third of the way.
You can always go back to it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so last meeting, we'll be talking about pursuing a different budget process that you have here before been using, which is loosely identified as an incremental process, which is just kind of take what you got and add or subtract from it. I told you that there are ranges of options, there's a new base budget, there's performance budgeting, and then the one that is best suited probably for us is priority-based budget program. And again, I remind you that most cities are not doing this because it's a little more difficult and requires more steps and they're satisfied with the incremental budget. But so I started that by giving you kind of the overall budget issues. That was that thing I passed out and said, "Read over this" because this is kind of becomes the general parameter within which priority-based budgeting works. And then in your packets, we got this, which is a pared-down version of a greatly pared-down version, even though it's four pages long, of the priority-based budget process. But I think I've pulled out the portions that are kind of most relevant to what we're going to do and assuming you want to proceed with this. If we get to the end of this and you say, "You know, that's really not what I had in mind," then you've got to tell me what it is you had in mind because I'm just listening and trying to figure out where you want to go. But the idea here is that you have to establish kind of the priorities that guide your decision-making when you're looking at individual departments, we'll call them programs. Because there's no other way for you to say, "This is worth more than that, this should stay, that should go, we could add 10% to this and deduct 20% from that." I mean, what are your decision parameters? How are you going to do that? If you decide to just say, "We want to reduce our budget by 20%," you may now want to reduce everything by 20. I mean, you may want to reduce some things because you think they are less important to the citizens of the city and leave other things alone. You might still want to get to that 20% figure, but you've got to figure out what elements you want to affect positively or negatively to get to that point. So we're starting tonight deciding what it is you want the city to be, other than what it is today. I mean, where do you want to go? So on the first page, I've got some typical goals and results that were taken out of looking at probably 30 cities. None decides, I mean, again, I tried to not look at Houston, but you know, about the smallest one I could get to was Joplin, Missouri. And these are kind of goals that I've found that I think might relate to what we do. So as a typical goal, you want an attractive, inviting hometown community. We do a lot of things along those lines with a property maintenance code. So when Dave presents his programs, you know, code enforcement for property maintenance is one of the things he's going to show you and how much that costs. And if that's your highest priority, then that would become a program you don't want to peer back because it's meeting your highest priority goal. Access to culture, education, recreation, and leisure activities. We do culture and education pretty well. We, the city, doesn't really get involved in recreation activities, but those needs are being met through other services, through the private, like the baseball leagues and the community center. And I mean, they're, you know, we maintain a park and has soccer fields, but we don't run soccer programs. So our contribution to those things, while good, isn't major. The healthy, sustainable environment, it's kind of a softer topic. It shows up in a lot of communities, but they're talking about problems we don't have, like how do we reduce pollution? What are the cost of homelessness? I don't want to say we don't have homeless people because I got corrected about that one day. They say St. Genevieve doesn't have people living on the street, but we have a lot of people who don't live in their home, whether it be an apartment or a house.
There's people living on the street.
Well, they're not showing up. I don't see them.
You don't see them, but talk to the police about it.
Okay. You're doing a good job of hiding it.
Well, they're not hiding it, they're just moving them all. Oh, that's the truth of it, you know? It's illegal to be homeless here in St. Genevieve.
I stand corrected again.
Yeah.
And that might then be something we want to talk about.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to go, you know, we can look down this list, but I think the time now, for the next 40 minutes or so, is for us to say, "These are the priorities that we, you, the Board of Aldermen, have for the city," and kind of talk about, you know, from that list, which are more or less important. Now, once we've done that, in our next session, the departments will have their itemized list of programs. An example, you know, I just used Dave, I'll use Dave again because he's sitting here and he's kind of got his done. So, you know, we do building inspections and we do occupancy inspections. Those are two different programs. We do enforcement of the weed ordinance and we enforce the property maintenance code. Those aren't the same. It's different programs. It all funds under the kind of the idea of code enforcement that they are different activities. So we'll be getting those and then you'll be ranking them according to how they support the goals that you have. And then we'll put dollars to those programs and you can decide how you want to distribute the resources we have over those programs. We're still going to come back at the end in September and produce a budget that looks like that, but the numbers will come from this effort. And then you'll decide, make the final decision. But by the time we get there, we should have hashed out everything. I mean, the consideration of the final budget should be a ministerial act at that point because your authority has been over all of the details. That gets us to kind of the resource alignment part. And so, again, this, page two and three describe in detail what constitutes these goals. These don't have to be your goals, but when we come up with goals differently, or you might want to adopt these, I don't know. We're going to have to eventually get it down to this level of detail in order to complete the program. Now, understand, kind of the last page, some of what we do is provide direct service to the citizens. When somebody calls and asks for a police officer because of an incident at their house, that's a direct service. Other things are support services. They're not unrelated and it's not, you can't, we won't be coming up with a dollar figure for how much of Pam's time gets charged to a call for police assistance. But we will come up with estimates of the percentage of support services that meet each of the programs because you have to keep that in mind. I mean, your cost for any given activity isn't just the person who knocks on the door to respond to the effort, to the call. And we're going to have to, again, not going to have a dollar figure, but we will have a dollar figure, but it'll be a percentage estimate of how that works out. Because Pam and Sue, as an example, provide services that are across all of our departments. My time is across all departments and I'm just going to have to figure out and advise you of my total expense to the city, how much of it is attributable to each of the programs. So...
When you say, "Will that be a percentage or dollars or ...?"
Well, I'm going to figure it out based on the percentage of my time.
Right, okay.
It'll be expressed to you as a dollar figure for that program. So we'll say, "It costs, you know, a police officer in a car, spending an hour responding to a call is X number of dollars." That's finite, we know that. The car, cost of operating the car, will have to be figured into that and calculated for that program. What's more difficult is how much of my time is related to that or Pam's time is related to that. Because, you know, as far as the police is concerned, I don't spend a lot of time overseeing the operations of the police department. If it's going well, then it doesn't come to my attention.
You've got good workers, yeah. That's why, it's with any department, it's how well you, you don't have to spend a lot of time if you've got good leadership in those departments. And for me, I think the, what I hear and what I've heard from every, not everybody, but there's been a concern, and I think you can go, this, back to page one, this list, and the last one on there is fiscally responsible and good governments. And it seems to me that we're concerned that we don't have enough money in the bank, our reserves. Is that a good assumption with this board? Okay, so, okay, well, that's what I want to get to is because, you know, we're the, we're not, and I know, at any time we could get into a financial crisis, at any time, anything could happen. It just, it just could happen. But what are we going to do? We're going to create a lot of work here amongst these departments. So what is the goal here is to, is it to trim budgets, to get more money in the bank so we have a better reserve? Or anybody got any? Bob, you were the first one.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the reserve, it's just whatever our bonding agents and companies require. I think we need to be fiscally responsible. You know, my big thing was, you know, because of the loss of income that we're looking at over our rental property, and that's going to happen one way or another, that $125,000 to $130,000 a year, we've got to come up with somewhere, you know, and I'm not in favor of going out and stripping any one department, but I think we have to look at it fiscally as a business that we've got to come up with that money somewhere, somehow. And unfortunately, our income's not increasing, you know, so we have to look at backing up here on some things that we've been probably too generous on. But I'm not interested in going out and stripping any one particular department. Maybe we have to look at it, everybody has to do something a little less, but, you know, and we can come up with that. I don't think we need to have a big pile of money in the bank. You know, I think we need to be, you know, we need to pay our bills, we need to be responsible. And we need to give the taxpayers who are paying the bills here, a good city to, you know, we have a lot of taxpayers in this city that are not fortunate. These people are paying the bills and I think we need to be a little more, a little more open to these people. We need to show our hand a little bit more.
Great. That's what I'm looking at is, that's the case. Transparency is, I mean, you come to City Hall and you ask, and I had, somebody asked me about what everybody's making. Well, somebody come to City Hall, they got a list, and it was given to them because we were not hiding anything on that. So, and I, and it's, I get that, but that's what I want to get to. I don't want to, I don't want to go through all this and at the end we're just like, "Well, better luck next year."
I don't want to go through all this if it's not addressing where you want to be at the end.
Yeah.
Well, we have a proven history as far as our budgets here. The last two I've been involved with have basically been a rubber stamp budget. We had minimal input, we had figures on paper, but we didn't really go into those departments because, one, we didn't have to. You know, now we have to. And that's what I'm going to sit in.
You said we have to, we don't have to. We can continue to go on just like we're doing. We're deciding to, not that we have to.
Where's the money going to come from, Paul? Where's this $125,000, $130,000 a year income that we're putting in the general fund off of the rent of that property? Where are we going to replace that money from? Without that money, we don't have a balanced budget.
We don't, we do.
We do.
That's your reserve, bro.
Right. Jimmy?
Yeah. I got these right from Sue before we came in. General Fund CD $234,971 in reserves and $880,003 cash. So a million, one hundred and fifteen thousand. And Martin was saying we need to be somewhere, maybe one year's budget. So we're about a third down.
One-year budget is kind of...
Right.
...a lack.
Yeah.
Of reserves.
Yeah, okay.
And realistically, a city our size, we might not be able to do that.
I know that, I'm just saying.
So those are things, and then to answer your question, is it, if that's the case then, if we're going to, we're going to, I'd like to have a hard figure then, is, so we're going to, we're going to trim these budgets, that's what we're going to trim the budget for, is to break even then, to get that 100, because, to get that $125,000 for the general fund.
And if that's what we want to do, then I would ask the department to do something different. I ought to say, "We've got to come up with $125,000 of savings for next year and tell us what it is you would have to do in order to contribute to that based on your relative contribution to the budget." The easier, the larger the budget, the easier it is to say.
I think because, you know, we have a proven history, I'm not sure. I mean, I've done budgets for, you know, a couple of different companies from programs that took days and hours and hours to go through, but, you know, when you're all said and done, it's an educated guess. But it is a goal that you have to shoot for, and as a city, it's even more important to shoot for. But, you know, that's my biggest concern, is how to replace that income. I don't see our income off of taxes increasing. You know, and one other question I had and stuff, in the event that we have to go to our reserves, you know, what type of, what would we have to have, I mean, a flood of 93? How did we pay for all of those costs that we incurred, you know, during that flood? That was, had to be a major expense that we weren't reimbursed for a lot of those costs or...
There wasn't no reimbursement, but I wasn't here, so I can't speak to how they did that.
That we spent a lot of money doing things.
Cleaning up?
Yeah.
I don't think there was a lot of money spent, was there, Pam?
I can't say off the top of my head.
I don't think there was. I think we got a lot of it from the Fed.
Did we, disaster relief?
I remember signing some checks that were astronomical when the mayor was out of town and, you know, the papers.
So you applied for disaster relief?
Yeah.
Took how long to come?
That came back, they came, that came.
It takes a while, yes, to get it.
Well, we were prepared to donate all our bus running to go to Farmington and pick up prisoners, bring them over here for, you know, what, a month, six weeks or whatever it was? And we weren't expecting to get paid. Well, they told me here in City Hall, "Go figure out what you spent and, you know, all your time and whatever it cost to use that bus." And we figured it out, we got a check.
Yeah, I mean, since I've been here, we've received a couple of federal disaster reimbursement funds. Fortunately, because the levy is doing its job, we haven't had any major claims. The county does it almost routinely.
Yeah.
And, you know, takes a declaration about a governor and the president requests of the governor in order to trigger it. But it's happened for the city four times since I've been here, and the county, it was a more regular participant.
And we got reimbursed.
We got reimbursed?
Yeah.
Or some percentage of it?
Some percentage at least, yeah.
So, you know, you say we have a balanced budget.
Yeah.
In the past, we have.
Since I have been here, we have always spent less than our revenue.
So what did we do with the extra?
That's why you have the figures that Jimmy produced.
Relative.
Oh, sorry. And there are other reserves, but, you know, water can only be used for water.
Right.
So it's, these are the general fund reserves.
Yeah, but we just seem like we're strapped, you know? We spent money for a remodel job here and now we have half the amount of money that we need to do the job right. Plus on top of it, we need to spend some more money. We need to dig around the outside, we need to waterproof the basement, secure the structure, I mean, it's structurally sound and stuff. But, you know, here we are, having to pick pennies and stuff to be able to do something like that. So that's where I question the balanced, you know?
Well, it was, there was just a problem with that is, nobody budgeted that in to take the maintenance of this building. And we didn't do that. So that's where the shark ball is. You know, just like we did with the fire truck, we're starting to put $20,000 a year away for another truck instead of waiting until the last minute to do everything, and that's when it's not cost-effective. So that's the problem, that's, those are the kind of things I would like to see us doing, is preparing a little bit better for the future.
Right, I agree.
So, you know, that's the difficulty in this is, you know, we can go in there and say, "Cross the board, everybody trim your budgets," and then we'll, and we might have to do that. I don't know.
Well, I'm going to argue against that because then you get 20% less police service.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And you might have been willing to just get 30% less maintenance on the park.
Well, you've got to watch that because that's, then every one of those items up above that, that bottom one, it affects every one of those. Your attractive, inviting hometown community might not be so attractive anymore because you're spending less money keeping it attractive, so...
I just look at the rate that we've been paving, you know, in the last two years, we've had a, we've had a pretty good push, but at the rate we're paving and stuff, by the time we're covered all the bases and stuff, we're going to have to start all over again, and I'm not sure.
Well, I'd like to address that. I've had this conversation with a couple of you over the years. I don't know if you and I have had this conversation. When I first got here, people said to me, "Why can't we have road like Perryville? Look at Perryville's roads."
I know how they do it.
Nice concrete roads, you know? Sidewalks, you know, and aside from the fact that they have more industrial bases, unrelated to how they do that. And the way they do it is, there's a provision, the state statute, that a fourth-class city can do street work and bill the benefiting property owners based on some formula, and that's up to the city. In the case of Perryville, they do road fundage for their prorated share of the cost of that improvement and put it, amortize it over 10 years on their tax bill. So if your section of the thing were $10,000, then you're going to get an extra $1,000 on your tax bill for 10 years. It was challenged, Perryville was the first to do it, the courts upheld it. And for all that furor, the next year, the citizens were lining up wanting their streets to get done. And they haven't done it for a couple of years, but they're doing it again, doing it again this year. I answered that question in this very room with a different board, and they said, one of them, "No, I don't want to pay to have my street repaired when all these other people are going to use it and I'm paying for it." And so that was that. There is a way to answer the problem of street improvements, but is that what you want to do? And that board did not want to do that.
I don't know if I'm in favor of going to the taxpayers and asking for more. It may have went through the well.
You don't have to, no, you don't have to ask them.
Right.
You just do it.
I wouldn't be in favor of that neither, no.
Quick question, as far as the balancing of the budget goes, how much extra revenue? You say we bring in more than we spend, how much? How much more do you know off the top of your head?
You know, probably 15, 8, 8,000 a year for the last several years.
So I can't help but notice that we keep talking about ways to cut different places, but we're not talking about how we could increase revenues. We're not talking about any kind of economic development, industrial development, anything like that. Is that, I mean, is that a lost cause at this point or can we even talk about that? I realize we're going to have to make investment in order to see some economic development. I think it's worth having the conversation before we decide we just need to cut. Let's talk about what we can do with existing resources and what we could invest in that would give us additional revenue streams long-term.
How would you do that?
That's what I'm asking. Economic development.
So you have to almost, you have to hire somebody.
I understand that, but that would be a long-term solution. I understand that, but it's at least something other than let's talk about cutting. We talk, we can talk about raising property values. If we help people and their property values are raised, that's more money coming to us. If we, you know, we've got somebody who does economic development, why can't we have some additional conversations about that? The city owns property.
Yeah, our economic development efforts now is just... Having the information that people need available to them when they find us.
Inquire, you know.
Right.
And having a relationship with the agencies in the state that do full-time marketing for the state, so that's how people got here.
Mm-hmm.
Is, you know, they, well, that's not exactly true, but the, and that's just kind of like, and we have that now. We know the inventory, that we know the people, they know us. We don't market the city for economic development, but it's a whole, it's a whole different game. It's advertising.
But if we're trying to determine things that we can do other than raise taxes to increase revenues, I think that's...
There was a full-time economic developer in the city at one time.
Aren't we paying a partial salary for that now?
We get other, the IDC and the Chamber of Pay... We get other, the IDC and the chamber pays the city for Sanders-Evers.
We've got land we've had for twenty years we're doing nothing with.
Right.
Their property, Gary suggested we list it.
And we talked about that. We've talked to, talked, this, this, not all of this board. We've talked to developers out there.
I know, I'm just saying.
You know what, you know, and I look at all this, I, I look at the efforts, I look at right down the street here, this museum that's going in, and I look at the people that are behind that and the money they're spending on that building, and it just, that is, that shows growth and that's progress, and there's, it's gonna bring people, and people are gonna send money. I mean, as much as we don't like that, we, we, we're paying for it, that, that water park out there. There again, that's, that's gonna create some, not high-paying jobs, but it's gonna create some jobs, and it's gonna bring some people to town. I think if, when the national park gets underway, it's gonna bring more people to town. I, I really think that, and I'm not, I'm just not ready to cry wolf, and I understand being a good steward. I get that.
Right.
And I, and I, and I wanna be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. But I, I also think that we are. I'm sorry, but we are. I mean, we, we provide some mighty good service in this community. You know what, I, I use this term a little bit loosely, but I know I am a tad bit spoiled. I know when I get on the phone and I call nine-one-one, in two to five minutes, there's gonna be services at my front door. Or I can call, you know, all the roads in our town. The worst road we have here is not, it's, it's not all, it's not all that bad. I've been to some other places that are some pretty bad roads that you have to drive on. And that's not an excuse for us not to, to provide good roads, and we've been doing that. And I know two hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far every year, but at least we, we're trying to make an effort to do some different things. Yes, sir.
To piggyback though, to, to trim is reactive, to, to build and grow top-line revenue, that's proactive. And I think that's where, I, I think that's what I hear in your concern. So do we have any relationship with like SBA? Like, are we, are we down in the SBA office saying, "Hey, can you funnel?" I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'm just saying, have we investigated all avenues like that? You know, there, there are probably some business incentives for new business owners to, to do business in this area. There's probably some incentive that we don't know about.
It may be incentive we don't know about. I don't, it would be, gonna be, uh, we... And the SBA's answer is yes, we do.
We have somebody down there knocking on that door?
Well, you don't, that's one of what SBA does. They guarantee loans, and, uh...
But they're in the know of, like, I mean, they know about people who wanna be in business, and they know about people who've walked in that door to try to, to establish themselves.
Isn't that what, kinda what Seminole Reasonable does for us?
Okay.
I think.
Right. And, uh, and, and, and we have, we, I have, there, there is a loan program right now available to anybody who's doing business in the southeast region. They have several hundred thousand dollars sitting in the back, ready to loan. They can't find any papers. And it's low interest.
Uh, part of that's because of the whole red tape you have to go through.
Yeah.
I mean, it is red tape, but...
And every meeting I go, I stand up and say, "We need borrowers," you know, and come back and tell Sandro, "So anybody looking for a loan, here it is."
So how much money is the city actually spending on the new museum? That brings up an interesting concept and stuff that maybe we need to use in some other programs around. I mean, they've purchased property, they've, uh, put in one heck of a facility there and stuff, and done it with no tax dollars. I think we need to think about that a little further, but, you know, my whole question about the budget stuff and being balanced and stuff is, uh, not that I think there's anything, you know, illegal going on and stuff, but are we really looking, are we really spending our money wisely? Have we kept up with the changes in times? I hate to bring this up, but I'm gonna bring it up, the subject's there, you know. The subject of health insurance came up. I've had, been fortunate to be in business in four different communities. Not all those communities do what we do. And I think we need to look at those things, and we need to take a hard look at them in trying to be fair to the taxpayer. And, you know, I'm speaking, you know, not only sitting on this board, I'm gonna speak as a taxpayer. I'm concerned about, you know, some of those things and stuff. Unfortunately, times have changed, and I think we really need to take a hard look at how we're spending our money and, and do it wisely. You know, be transparent. I don't need, you know, I, I've been in business a long time, and I've managed businesses a long time. I don't know if I need to be trained or not, and I sure don't know everything, but I think we just have to look hard, look at everything we do. I'm not sure we need to go through all of this process and stuff to a certain point, but, um, I just think we need to look at things differently, and we need to look at every aspect of how we're spending the taxpayers' money. And I started to say a while ago, you know, we have some taxpayers that are struggling around, and I'm not sure we're giving them their money's worth in how we spend their money. So, I know that's a pretty broad statement, but...
It's very, very broad.
We're only gonna be dealing with general revenue-funded programs, because we already know you can't take a water dollar and spend it on a road.
Right.
In that same vein though, I do wanna, it's timely, I, I wanna add to that real quick, with your comment about the insurance. It is timely, because the largest entity that is subsidized by taxpayers, the school district, just did their medical and their dental and optical. So, and it's not only the largest federally, or taxpayer-funded entity, it's the fourth-largest business in the county and the city, employer. I brought with me today, and I emailed several of you, if you wanna pass that around, the fact that the school board has a cap with respect to how much they give to their staff and faculties. And I think we should start to think about being in line with the fourth-largest employer and the most publicly funded, seventy-seven percent of their, and more, a little bit more than seventy-seven percent comes from local taxpayers, that's the city and the county. Then a little bit more, twenty-seven percent comes from the state, and I think it's like seven or six percent comes from the federal. So with that being said, seventy-some, seventy-five percent, realize that you have teachers who are making about the same as city employees, their base pays about forty thousand dollars, and the school board has a cap of five thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents. That's it.
Per employee?
I have it right here.
Per employee?
No, per their employee, period. So if they wanna add their spouse on different ranges here, they have a whole bracket. For example, it starts anywhere from forty-five hundred dollars to add a spouse at this range, all the way up to eight thousand. But my point is, the city might wanna start thinking about six thousand dollars an employee, and then whatever else you want to provide for you or your family, you make up the difference. Just like they're doing to the school district and every single employee that's there.
Other than, 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 than we pay for full family, which, you know, we, we do offer them an upgrade that they pay for.
I realize that, and don't get me wrong, the school board does pay for two plans of the four, where the employee doesn't have to pay anything, which is awesome, and I love that, right? They have HSA programs, these are the four programs they have in front of you, okay? And down below, I highlighted, if you're single, if you have a spouse, and there's family there as well. But my point being is, the school board has come up with this algorithm that stipulates that they will not spend more than five thousand, five hundred, nineteen dollars and sixteen cents, and we're spending ten thousand in some cases, per employee. I would ask the board to consider putting a cap on what the city will contribute to benefits, and if employees want more than that, it's on them.
Well, I did a little further research on some of those numbers, Gary, and, and out of the two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars that we're spending, if every employee here took the upgrade, we'd recover nineteen thousand dollars and change out of that two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. The one figure that I question the most is what we are spending on spouses. We're spending over seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Exactly.
They're not auditing.
I didn't even know that.
And seeing if they have insurance where they work.
Right.
We're just paying for it free.
Okay.
There, there, and I, I'll just leave it at that, and, and, well, I don't know of anybody in the city government. I have worked places where the people, although they were covered on their spouse's insurance, took the employer's insurance also.
As a secondary.
And, and, you can't have two primary insurers, so one of them becomes, becomes secondary. And I said, "But you're fully covered by your, by your husbands." Well, that's a dollar they're gonna spend on Harry, and I wanna get, you know, I don't wanna be left out. They oughta make that available to me too. And as you know, maybe, and you can't pick and choose. You can't say, "I'm gonna insure Gary, but I'm not gonna insure Jimmy."
That's discrimination.
Right.
And you can't, and you can't adjust the level. You can't say, "I'm gonna pay for police officers' insurance, but not for street department people's insurance." It's gotta be uniform across all classes.
Well, and uniform contribute, contribution is what I'm saying.
I, I have a question. Have they always had a cap?
I, you know, that's a very good question. We should ask somebody on the school board, Matt.
I don't know if there's anybody here on this.
Is there anybody on the school board? Oh, we have the president of the school board here. You'd have to ask him.
You know what I'm saying, it's, if you've never had a cap, it's a little bit difficult.
I can't answer that, sir. I've just been fortunate to be here for five years.
What you're saying, we just voted a raise for the police department?
Yeah, and then you're gonna turn around.
Take the dollar out from under them on the, on the back end?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you've always had a cap, and you know that, that's different than taking the cap.
That's a very good ques- I say we get that information, and we'll, I'll provide that to you. But what I am saying is, I think it's a good business case, a sound business case, and you have the largest entity in town, basically, doing this with their employees. So why aren't we paying the city?
Now, I don't know if, if, we've been talking about this, Pam came up with this idea, it's not even credit with where it belongs. Obviously, anything that you do along those lines represents the net cost to the, to, to the employee. So right now, they're getting paid X number of dollars, and they're getting insurance, and all of it. And you say, "Okay, well, you're still gonna get X number of dollars, but now you have to start paying for your insurance."
Oh, I'm not saying this year.
Well, I'm not either.
I'm saying, consider it for next year.
I'm saying there's...
But I am saying that's exactly what the school district is doing.
But, and when you make that transition, you basically
Right.
give someone a reduction in pay.
Do you know when they went to this cap, Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know per se that I would call it a cap as much as...
Well, that's what Martin's calling it.
What? What else isn't?
Health insurance. Well, it's not capped because it can rise, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but right now, that's...
So if it rises next year, we will do all we can to control that by increasing deductibles, by, uh, finding a different co-insurance rate, by going to an HSA versus a PPO. So it could go up, there's not a cap. What we're, what the school district does is say, "We'll pay for this plan with these limitations."
Right.
And the cost, I believe, is going up this year seven percent. We're still incurring that cost.
Right.
So if that's the cap that we're talking about, then there's a cap, but...
More of a fixed dollar amount that you budget every year.
But it could still go up, and if you wanna buy up from that, if you wanna go from HSA to PPO, then you pay the difference.
Exactly.
Pam's idea.
Yeah.
We'll have to check with Martin on it.
But you...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Martin's got the floor.
Okay, oh, I thought he was done.
No, no. Make a change, and make it effective for every employee that comes next. You can't do that.
No, I'm saying do it for every employee now. No grandfathering at all. They don't do it with the teachers, we do it with the city employees. Now, listen, if we're gonna be fiscally responsible to our citizens, then we need to have something in concert with the largest, the fourth-largest employer in this district, which is also funded by taxpayers, which everybody here in the city is, is doing this. I think it's a sound business case. I think it makes sense. Please don't think, I don't think it's, I think it's fantastic. I thank you, thank you, thank you, I love you. But if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
How is, how does that, when did that go into effect?
That's what I asked.
What, what is that?
This.
This year, this year. Of this year.
It starts July first of this year.
Okay.
It start, okay, go ahead.
And it was similar last year as well.
Okay, so there's not, you're not losing money this year, or you, out of your paycheck, because of that?
And...
I mean, it's not costing you more.
You didn't have coverage last year that you didn't have to pay for, that you have to pay for this year?
So what I'm saying is, then you can keep the insurance this year and prepare them for next year. Because I'm, I'm gonna find out when this happened for you. But I guarantee you, the insurance adjusted with market, and when I show you that they probably had to go to this two or three years ago?
HSA?
No, when they, yes, when they started going to these different plans.
So we didn't magically decide that we were gonna lower someone's coverage?
But did you always have a set, a set amount?
We changed from PPO to HSA.
Okay.
And so I guess, you know, that requires a more manageable health insurance. You have to manage your health insurance, you have to be a better, uh, a better user of your health insurance and that plan, so maybe there's a lesser degree of coverage.
Right.
You could interpret it that way, anecdotally, I guess, but we didn't, the school district didn't change plans and decrease people's pay, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I think the gentleman here was asking.
That did not happen.
But if we do that, Gary, we're gonna affect somebody's...
Paul, all I'm saying is, if it happened to the teachers at some point, and this is the market, this is the world we live in, then we need to be in concert. I'm not trying to say that no... I would love to make, to wave a magic wand and give everybody a hundred percent medical coverage. Right, I'm happy with what I have, and I'm grateful for my job, and I love this school district. What I am saying is, the city employees should have something very similar to the school district, and I invite you to go talk to the administration to find out how they do it. That's all I'm saying.
You know, Centene did it a couple of years ago, you know, one of the biggest, you know, third-party administrators around and stuff. We had an employee that fell under that. The employee of Centene had to drop their spouse off of the insurance coverage or lose their job within so many days that they went through. If their spouse worked somewhere that offered insurance, they had to be on that insurance of the company they work for, not somebody else who has no, you know, and it's proven in the insurance industry that the more free you give people, you know, the less efficiency it is. And I mean, unfortunately, the healthcare costs now, we're all forced into efficiencies because of deductibles and you're trying to keep premiums in line.
I don't think we can at all say, if your spouse is employed, they should get insurance through their employer, but I do think we can say...
Sure you can.
But I think, if, I don't think we should say that to the city employees. I think we should say, "If you would like optional coverage for your spouse and dependents, you pay a percentage." And that way, if the spouse has offered something through their employer, that might look more attractive, and they might go with that plan. But I think that it is important that we don't become an employer that it looks great if you've got a family, because it, on paper, it'll look like you're making a whole lot more because you've got a whole family, that you're getting covered. I mean, we ju, yes, you're right, Martin, we just gave the police officers a raise to bring them more in line, but now we look even more attractive to somebody who's got a spouse and three kids. I don't, I don't feel that that is something...
Coverage creates disparity. I, I agree with that.
I don't feel like employees should benefit more because they have a bigger family. I feel like they should be contributing if they want coverage for their spouse and dependents.
And in addition, I wanna remind everyone here on this board has seen the salaries of the city employees. They are in concert with teachers. The teacher's base is forty thousand, well-educated, hard-working people just like these folks. So I'm not asking anybody to give up money, I'm saying, "Let's get in line with the school district."
Jimmy, Jimmy's got the floor, yeah.
Yeah, I got three little quick things. Use the five thousand dollars, that's employee...
If you're gonna ask any questions about this specifically, I invite you to invite somebody from the school, the board, the, the school board. Because I'm not gonna be able to answer these questions.
No, no, I'm just saying, use the term five thousand, right next to it is employee and spouse, eight thousand.
That's because there's tiers. You know how these work, right, Jimmy?
Yeah, I do. And then, maybe the school can tell a swap percent of their budget goes to insurance.
That would be a great question if you wanna ask that.
And, uh, you know, school is great. They've got a lot, a lot more employees than the city does. We only have twenty-two employees, so...
I just, I just invited this for...
I'm just...
I just present this for food for thought.
Yeah, well, me too.
To make sure that we are in concert with the other publicly-funded entities.
Okay. Okay.
But of those twenty-two employees, twenty-two take the health insurance benefit?
No. Not all.
Twenty-two are the ones that are currently on our insurance.
We have, we have.
Right.
We have forty-two.
Right. But, but.
Right.
With the full-time, insurance-eligible employees, twenty-two, how many people do we actually pay for medical coverage for? How many employees, spouses, and children? Does anybody know that?
Twenty-two, no.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars worth, that's all.
Twenty-two.
Not twenty, no. And how many spouses and children for those twenty-two people?
I don't know. I got the.
I don't know. That's why I.
That's what I wanna know. For twenty-two employees, how many plans are we paying? How many people are we insuring?
That's why I asked for the payroll portion of that and stuff, to see what number of people.
So out of the twenty-two employees, you wanna know how many have their spouses on it?
And how many children?
And how many have their kids on it?
So how many?
No, she wants to know total head count of people on, for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. What's the total?
How many were, how many is on that?
How many kids? How many spouses?
All right. So there are seven employees who only take the individual coverage.
Okay.
There are three employees who do employee-spouse.
Okay.
There are five, um, three employees who have employee-child, both spouses. And there are nine employees who have a full family, spouse.
So you wanna know, out of those nine that have family, you wanna know how many kids are on their plans?
Do we pay, do we pay, and I'm sorry, I don't have the paper in front of me. Do we pay a family rate, or do we pay per dependent?
Family.
Family rate.
Family.
One, four.
You'll pay the same amount.
Right. It doesn't make any difference how many kids.
We'll pay the same amount, whether I have five kids and you have three kids. It's the same.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Cause it's.
It's all a family plan.
Correct.
Nice.
So, so if you, you, you know, the, 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 if we made employees responsible for twenty percent of their family coverage, those, those employees, I just read to you, the city would save twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a year. At thirty percent, it would be forty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two. And at forty percent, it would be fifty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine. And I can stop, I'll email this spreadsheet to all of you tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, this thing that you had sent me shows eleven employees on the base plan and eleven employees on the buy-up plan.
The buy-up plan's different, because they're paying for the, for the difference.
Right. But that's twenty-two employees that are on the plan.
Nine, twelve, fifteen. This is twenty-two also, what I just told you.
Why does it list them out by names and what the dollar amount is by those names?
I'm confused.
Thanks for the.
Well, yeah. That's the.
Yes.
That's what I took, is eleven employees on the base and eleven buying up.
The, I don't know how many of these people that I just told you bought up. Bought up is better coverage, not from family to, not, not, not from individual to family.
Right. Well, it's categorized out right by their name there, which, if they're on employee, employee-spouse, and employee-family, they're all categorized right by their names.
So what, what is, what are your questions? I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Well, it looks like, to me, there's eleven employees on the base plan and eleven employees on the buy-up plan that are paying the difference.
It, it could be. I mean, we just gave you the total that have, the total that are employed, or the total that are on the insurance.
Right. And the total dollar amount. The twelve-thousand dollars a month is based on all those numbers by each one of those employees' names. By each one of those employees, uh.
The, the thirty percent, thirty percent, forty percent?
It gives them, it gives them both. It gives you if they want the, the base and, the buy, the base and the buy-up, it shows you there. But if they choose the buy-up, they're paying the difference.
We don't pay the buy-up. So figures I just gave you are from the base, and it, that gets from these figures.
So that report's not correct, then?
It's the same figures.
I mean, there's some on here that are no longer.
So this is something we should probably visit in the near future.
Right.
Obviously, we're probably gonna change anything for this year, but I am just inviting us to think about getting in line with the school district. And I also wanna say that I love these conversations, on a positive note, because the fact that we are paying attention to the budget will show our constituents that even though most of us don't wanna cut this department or that department or this department, right? Cause I don't think any, most of us don't wanna do that, or any of us. But I do like the fact that if we can save twenty-five thousand dollars here, a hundred thousand dollars here, over the next couple of years, three years, then we can save as we try to grow our community. I'm all for the economic development, too. So I wanna thank you for the conversation. I like the fact that this, this board is actually looking into.
Five minutes.
And as I was saying, this board is looking into the budget more to answer questions.
Well, what would you like to do next, in two weeks?
I'd like to see your breakdown like this, one, similar to this one.
Gary, no, you can keep this one.
Okay.
I can keep this here?
Yes.
You can keep a copy.
Oh, absolutely.
There's some spares.
And by all means, feel free to contact someone.
We'll take a break. Or what do we, or did you ask a question?
I wanna prepare for a work session next week to continue this process. What, again, you know, if you can do that. What would you like, what would you like to see? We're not gonna do this. What would you like to see?
I'd like to see what you guys have broken down, something like this.
We're, we're just, we're talking about the insurance aspect of the budget.
You only wanna deal with the insurance?
Is that all we wanna deal with?
I'm just, I, I would like to see where we are as far as what they have insurance-wise. And I'm not saying change anything this year. I'm just saying, I'd like to see where we are with that. Myself.
If you're gonna, when you change it.
When does the insurance come new? When, when, when does it do? When do we renew our insurance?
You just did that next year.
It's on the sec, it's on for the second reading, and that's gonna go into effect June one.
June first. So this year's locked in, and we're all, it's tickety-boo. These conversations would be for next year.
But we could, we could, we could do payroll deductions starting in the next fiscal year, correct? We could start those. That does not have to align with open enrollment. Payroll deductions.
That's true.
For employee contributions, we could do with October.
And that would help lessen the load.
But your employees are basing what they want on.
Renewal year.
On the renewal year.
Right.
Which is due first.
But that can change.
What can change?
They can opt out or opt in at a program anytime during that renewal year.
I have to check on that.
I don't know.
That perfect.
We're signing a contract with Anthem for them to provide insurance service for our census for twelve months. They said, based on your census, here's the rate. Now, we can't, and they're, and they're expecting to get that revenue for a year, so we can't middle of it.
Yeah, you can't change it in the middle.
Discontinue our contract.
That's all predetermined. Uh, Mike, you had something?
If you lose an employee, you don't continue to pay premiums on them.
No, but if we gain an employee that has, you could be losing a point that has.
The rate for that employee stays the same.
Sure.
All right. Mike's got the floor.
I, I agree with Gary. I think we should definitely look at mirroring that plan, or the possibilities of mirroring that plan. But I also think there's a lot of mirror in this. Having read this this afternoon, I think this focuses the team here on.
I agree.
I mean.
It gives us something to focus.
We, we don't have metrics unless we do this. So we, it, then it's my opinion versus Gary's, and it's conflict and whatever. This effort here, if we go through this exercise, I think this is great. And I think it focuses the, the group.
All right. We're gonna, gonna give you all a two-minute break here.
All right. Next time, we're gonna, we're gonna set our goals.
I, I just wanted to make sure that's where we're headed, because it sounded like we ditched this.
I was getting ready to abandon the plan.
Could, could we do that at five fifteen?
No.
Thank you.
One issue out of all of these issues.
I'm totally confused.
I formed an O C, I've been down to two times. I've never seen one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a roll call.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Wilton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, takes us down to the city administrator's report.
Okay. Uh, first item I wanna talk about is the, uh, my attendance at the community television board meeting, uh, which isn't the important element. One of these cameras is not functioning well. They can't pan it. Under our agreement with the, the, uh, community television, we own the cameras, and we're responsible for, for, for maintaining them. And I'm only telling you that because, uh, we're gonna need to buy a, a new camera. Uh, and, and they were discussing camera systems, and, uh, we're in a position to put in a new camera system. So I am going to cover the cost for placing a camera, cause that's our obligation under the contract, uh, and, and, and probably not agree to a six-thousand-dollar revamp of the, of the system.
While we're on that subject, one of the things that's been brought up to me and stuff is through our community television program, we are live-streaming, um, information from a radio station. Are we recovering anything for doing that?
No.
What? No. We're not.
We say we, I mean, I, we give a grant to the community television. They have a board of their own, and they make the decisions on how they handle their resources. We don't participate in those decisions, except Buck sits on the board and gets to vote.
That, that hasn't directly been brought up, um, as far as that goes. Basically, all that is, is so that it doesn't.
Pre-advertising.
Essentially, yes.
Yes, it is.
But, but what that does is provide some sort of background music slash, just some sort of noise that the TV station would not have in general. Obviously, where that, that sound comes from has something to do with, with our director of, of the television station, of his other job that he has. So he, he livestreams because of that. But it gives it a, uh, more appealing sound because of, now, yeah, we don't recover any cost, but it would just be a silent channel if, if there were nothing there.
But there's ads on that station.
Certainly, yes.
For people that are paying for.
Ads for just the radio, not the TV, yes.
You know, this is, this is the type of thing in our discussion of budget, and I realize we don't have any control over that, but these are the things, I think, where we're missing the boat. We're not recovering things where we can.
Well, they would recover it. Arguably, whatever money they get out of that would be that much less you would have to give them in your, in your grant.
I'd say it needs to be investigated.
This came up when we talked to the, the guy last year, remember? He didn't, wanted some more money, and that, I asked that question.
Yeah, I'll call that. I think it's a good question.
Yeah, it's just. For the record, I don't think they were asking more money. I think we were just asking for the contract to be.
Yes.
A, you know, fodder.
Right.
So, just, just to throw it on the record. You know, not to, I didn't wanna slander anybody, but.
But the contract with Charter, correct me if I'm wrong, does not state that all of the money that Charter gives a city has to go.
We don't have a contract with Charter.
No.
No, my point, I'm not necessarily looking for the community television to ask for less money from us, but maybe that'll provide them a little more revenue to buy.
Right.
Stuff.
Yeah. I don't know if that's ever been addressed or not. I really don't. Um, it's, it's, it's been talked about, but it never got that far. So, um, I, I don't know what a, a good alternative would be, but I could certainly talk to Gary about.
Yeah.
Us bringing it up and talking about it. So, I mean, if there's paying ads on there, that should be revenue.
There is.
Okay. I didn't quiz her as to what that was, but I'm glad she went. As you may know, and most of you know, all of you probably know, that the levee district and the volunteers have been walking the, the levee because of, because of the high water. Gary reported to me today that they found a couple of issues, but no major problems in, in the levee. The, prior to that, we, before the water started rising, I attended with the levee district chairman and emergency management, a conference call, that they have it right before the water starts going up, every time it goes up, and they kind of give you interesting perspective on what, what to expect. Their predictions were about 50%. The water levels in the river did what they expected, but we didn't get near the rain that they were told us to expect, so it worked out well. I've communicated your decision relative to the general reevaluation report from the Corps of Engineers. I never heard, so I'll keep you informed. Got the easements from Spire on Chadwell Lane. The owners of the, the storage sheds, you know, wanted to be last, to see if there were any changes during the Spire negotiations that would affect their access to the property, and then they were going to sign the easements. And so I've talking, I've talked to, to one of the owners, and he said he's gonna come by and sign the easements, and we're ready to go. So we'll be looking to advertise for bids probably, hopefully, next week. Well, I'm gonna make next week, week after next, in the, in the local paper. And the engineer will notify MoDOT to put it on their website, and we need to, our contract with the engineer was just for design services and bidding. So we'll probably be asking you to enter a contract for inspection services when, when we get to that point on, on awarding the bid.
Were the storage buildings guys looking for access off of Chadwell originally?
Yes. Yes. That's always been their, their request relative to the design, if they're gonna give us the easement. They'd be happy, he would've been happy with a roll curve, just some driveway access.
Right.
We're gonna pour a little apron entrance for them, but, you know, they'll, they'll have to take it from there.
So what do we have to do for Spire? Don't we have to change?
Spire's gonna do it. They've gotta move, move the door, since the road elevation's being brought up, the door to their control building won't open, it's close to the road. So they're gonna move the door around the other side. They, they said that, I, I said we would include that in our bid. They said, no, we have, we have to do it. So they're gonna contract with a, a local mason company to cut the opening and put the door in, and they'll just bill us, and they've already, they took bids, so I know we're getting the, you know, the best, best price. And it's a company that, with which I'm familiar, so.
Do we know how long traffic's gonna be disrupted there at that location?
No, we won't know until we award the bid with the contractor and talk about those things. But we'll, we'll let you know before anything happens, and you can probably come to the table if you'd like to have that discussion with them.
Yeah, I'll be there also, because that's our only access.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. The, Dave held a meeting of the rental housing committee. It was a very interesting meeting, I thought, and talked a lot about mobile home and what we do and don't do and can't, and can't do. From that, you will be getting a recommendation for some code changes to, to address the issues that they discussed. The water tower is complete. They still have to disinfect it next week. Steve informs me that they have a little, they have a little section of line yet to put in, and it's been too wet for them to get in there and do that, but they expect people to do that in the next couple of days, and that we should be able to fill the tower, start filling the tower next, next week. You've already seen the priority-based budgeting work that did. So, any questions?
Thanks.
Is the community center doing anything as far as filling pools now or anything that that would create?
Oh, they're not gonna, they're, they're, they said 30 days away. I drive by there, I don't see how they're gonna finish that thing in 30 days. But we beat, we beat their, their deadline.
Any other questions? We have to elect the president of the board tonight. We all have to.
Seeking nominations from the floor?
Yes, any nominations from the floor?
Do they have to be here?
It'd be a great time not to put him on there.
Yes, I guess so.
Stipulation, yes, they have, no, they don't. That's fine if he's, if they're not here, so.
Well, yeah, I would nominate Joe Prince as president of the board.
Second. All in favor?
Ask for other nominations.
So any other nominations?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to our staff reports. David, you're up first.
So make sure you know, remember, you were president for years, right? I was. You had my report, there's not a whole lot there. A couple of things I was gonna point out. Martin alluded to, we had the first meeting of the rental housing advisory commission, good meeting. That recommendation will probably be a few months down the road, but it'll come to you, so things are happening there. And then we did have a community assistance contact visit from SEMA, and it went well. Everything that we needed, we had in place. FEMA can also perform audits, we haven't had one in a while, but she didn't anticipate one, it's just something that she came down to perform, to prepare if it does happen. And everything we needed, we had. She answered a few questions for me, and things went well.
That was the only question I had that we had talked, and I see where you had 12 for 12, and all passed your, the special use permits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, somebody had questioned me because there was a, they hadn't received theirs yet, but I take it with all of them were done.
All the 12 that are required, were required to have some version of follow-up. I communicated with, and some of them were just a matter of go there, look, be done.
Yeah.
So they may not be aware, but they passed.
Okay, no, no, that's not. It was one that was inspected, and he was saying, well, there's another guy that never got inspected, but it's probably already taken care of.
Okay.
I'm 12 for, you're 12 for 12.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What requires a demolition permit?
What requires?
Yes.
Afraid to say demolition. When you take a building down?
Mobile home?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
How, how long does a, a person gets a demolition permit? How long do they have to get that structure down, Dave?
According to what we were looking at, a demolition permit is a building permit. It's just a different variation of building permit, you have two years.
So they got two years to, to get their structure?
I'm not saying it should take two years.
But they do have legally two years to do that.
Yes, sir.
But I also think that there's something to have a certain amount of time to start.
We covered that.
From the time that's.
So I think the question that's being raised here is, would you like to consider revising the ordinance that would shorten the period of time you have to implement a demolition permit?
Yes.
Yes.
You have six months to start it, two years to finish it, yeah.
Yes.
And is there a time period that comes to mind? Is it a year?
It's too long.
Too long.
I, I, I think strongly consider that not everything that gets demolished, demolished is a trailer, which shouldn't take long, but this would be a blanket application to any structure, so it may take a little longer. I, I don't wanna make excuse for probably the situation that's being referred to.
Consider doing it for, say, six months with a six-month renewal, and then they would have to come in and justify why they couldn't get it done in the first six months in order to get the renewal. Anything after that, they would have to start over.
Thirty days to start?
About a six-month, the trailer's been sitting down there flat for three months already.
Well, what's, what happens if they don't start in 30 days? Just has to get a new one?
Yeah, you can get a new one.
Start all over.
Demolition put, permit is very affordable.
How much is it?
I believe $25.
And does that cover the interior of a structure?
Covers the structure, so an interior.
You mean interior only?
No.
Oh.
Including interior.
It's the structure.
Right.
Only structure, not the interior.
Well, I mean, I would include the interior with the structure.
I think you demolish the structure and not?
Demolish the interior.
Demolish the interior.
No. If you're demolishing in the interior only, does that?
It doesn't require permission.
No.
Yes, sir.
Any reason or any clue why it's two years in the first place?
Because it's not addressed?
It is.
Because the demo permit falls in the same category as the building permit.
Okay. The building permit is two years. It never was separately addressed.
Do you guys would like to see something that says 30 days to begin, six months to finish?
With a, with a automatic renewal on request.
How many of these do we get? I would assume not that many.
I've been around, I guess this is my 10th or 11th month, and there's been three.
Yes.
Well, it needs to be done in a timely fashion.
Yes.
That, that over there in that trailer park, that's dangerous. There's kids running all over the place, and it's a.
Climbing on it?
Yeah, it's nuts. And I know it's somebody's personal property, I get that, but still, there has to be a timely manner.
I think that situation falls under the same situation of what we're talking about in the rental housing advisory commission. Be a responsible landowner.
I talked to somebody last night that's bought a house for a dollar.
A house? Is it on Market Street?
Hey, we'll talk.
Okay.
It's going on.
Well, the problem we've had is some of these dollar deals, lease-to-own deals, is the, is the house isn't suitable for occupants?
No, that's the problem.
And these people think they have something they can live in, and then all of a sudden they found out their dollar was not well spent.
And the same thing's going on in the trailer. I talked to somebody, that's happening in the trailer park, too. They're getting a great deal on this trailer.
We'll talk.
I'm just saying, it's just, we gotta, it's getting serious, so.
I agree. Any other questions?
I would like to see that expedite that. If there's a building going down, for safety reasons, it, it needs to happen.
I'll call the, the trailer park owner who lives in Iowa again.
Yeah. And that, and, and you know, and if the guy's got a special, he's got a problem, he can, he needs to communicate that with, with the city, you know, it's, it's a responsibility.
Yep.
But that's a safety hazard over there, and there's kids all over that whole place, so.
Wouldn't we talk about this residential parking?
I mean, I would imagine we'd talk about it when it comes up later in the agenda, but, I mean, I'm up here if you have a question.
I'm just not sure about it.
That's not a question.
Isn't it item?
Yes.
Yeah, you gotta.
We'll get there. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
All right, don't leave. Somebody will have a question later for you.
Nice.
Kenny, chief?
Hey, everybody. Sorry to miss last month, but on behalf of the volunteers at the firehouse, we'd like to welcome the new alderman and tell you that you guys are welcome to come out to our firehouse anytime. Every Wednesday night there, we're there doing maintenance. Come around, look around, see what's going on, and see how we do things. And the invitation's there all the time, so. About a whole lot of my report, you should have it in front of you. We've been doing a lot of maintenance-type things at the end of the year, getting our vehicles oil changed, lube jobs and things like that, getting our small engines all up to speed. Probably the biggest thing is, we're just about ready to put the ladder truck in full service. For the last several weeks, it's been available if we needed it, but I've got a few more guys I want to get trained on driving it through our narrow streets before I cut it loose. Right now, we're in the initial stages of a brief little ceremony. My intention is to put it on, in service on the 19th of this month. I've got three or four more guys that I want to get through the driver before I cut it loose. It actually did go on its first call yesterday. We had a kind of a busy hectic morning. We had a couple of guys doing PR up at St. Jen's School for their little mock accident thing, and we got a vehicle fire on Main Street, so come what you got. So they brought the ladder truck, and we didn't pump any water off of it, but we did use the tools that we mounted in the front bumper on it, so it worked real good for us. So it's had, had its first couple of calls, but it isn't officially in service yet, but we'll have it by the end of the month.
How many volunteers you still, are you short?
I'm actually short per roster two right now. I had one that tried to retire a couple of times, and I wouldn't let him, and he finally got to a point, he says, I'm leaving whether you let me retire or not. And then we had another one that left for personal reasons. He's now married, and his fiancee's going to school in Denver, so he had to move out there. We're always looking for new people. It doesn't have to be male either. We can accept females. We're more than willing to try them out, see how things go. Applications are always available at the firehouse, or you can check out our Facebook page, anybody that's not familiar, we do have a Facebook page, and we keep everything up to speed and let you know what we're doing in, in the department out there, too.
Where are you going to, Kenny?
Pardon me?
Says there you're going, leaving for another job.
Oh, I, I didn't put that in for me. That would've been the other guy.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
Did you not get the memo?
I guess not. Actually, hopefully, four and a half more years, and I will no longer have to work for a living.
How'd that mock accident go at the high school?
I didn't get a chance to take it, and I had a radio programmer coming in and doing the work, but there was a couple of starts and stops because of the calls. We had five calls in an hour and a half period, but it usually goes pretty good. We had two guys go up during the daytime. We're kind of shorthanded, so we could only send two, but we sent the truck up there, and they were able to help out the, the scenario, and they actually did a little extrication, cut the car apart a little bit for them. It's an eye-opener for the kids.
Really appreciate that, chief.
We're glad to do it. We're always looking to get out in the public, so if anybody has suggestions for PRs or things that they'd like to see us do, give me a call, we'll see what we can work out, too.
Yeah, one more question. At the firehouse, you know, what do you do for maintenance over there? What happens if, where do you get your monies to, say, the building needs to be painted or tuck pointed or something like that?
We have the line item currently for building maintenance, which takes care of a lot of our smaller stuff. I do have enough left this year that I do intend to try to get the interior painted this year out of my current budget, but the building on the outside is in a real need of paint. I don't remember exactly what year it was, but it was like 2008, I believe, the last time it was painted, and the cost at that time was $14,000. So that's way more than my current line item for a one-time thing. It really needs to have some sealant put on the concrete blocks to protect it, and then repaint it again, so that's something I'd, I don't know how to go about it, but we need to address that in the near future, because.
Well, that's, we're, we're running into the same thing in this building. We're, we're not planning anything, and that's, you know, we're talking about, that's a, that's a structure, same way with the welcome center, you know? There's maintenance on those buildings, and we own them. It's our responsibility to keep them up so they don't deteriorate, you know?
The, the paint is bad enough on there, now you can take your hand and run it down the front, and you'll end up with a chalky hand, so it, it's in need of it. And the sooner we do it, the better protected it's gonna be, so I would ask that we figure out a way to do that if possible. I know budgets are strained, but that's something we really need to address sometime in the near future.
What's involved with this live fire train you got coming up?
That's a University of Missouri class. They actually have a mobile trailer, and they come around, they do, it actually starts tomorrow night. We're gonna be doing interior discussions about how to handle the hose and how to make fire attack stretching lines and things like that. So it'll be four hours of lecture tomorrow night, and then they'll actually have this burn trailer that they use propane in, because it's a clean and burner, and then they send them in through a door, drag the hose through the building, and simulate what a house would be like, but it's set up in a mobile situation, so they move it from place to place. It's a 12-hour certified class through the University of Missouri. We're actually, it's open to the entire region, and there's so much going on nowadays that we're having trouble filling it, but we are gonna go ahead with it. The fire marshal office is paying for the class. It's a $4,500 class to, to do the 12 hours.
That was one of my questions anyway.
And it's all funded through the fire marshal's office.
Have you run into any issues with the new fire truck in driving some of the streets? I see you guys driving on, especially downtown quite a bit. Has there been any issue?
No issues to this point. Out of the ordinary, Merchant Street has always been one of those crazy places for us, so that's one of the reasons why I haven't put it in service. I actually have designed a course, and every driver has to take it through the course, which includes right-hand, left-hand turns, coming up Main, our Merchant Street with the narrow street, just to make sure everybody can handle it before I turn it loose. But everybody's gone through it, and we haven't had any issues at this point. And a lot of our guys, even though they don't drive trucks every day, because we have them out there, we encourage them to take them out and drive them, once they're cleared to drive them, and they get a chance to take it around, run it through the streets, and get practice with it, too. Yes, sir.
I have a question, comment, my shirt.
We did have a comment. I was hoping they would post something. The car fire yesterday that we had down on Main Street, after we got everything picked up, we had a few ladies standing in the streets, and they gave me one of those, hey, come over here a minute, asked, do we have any place that we can do any customer comments or anything? I said, well, the best thing to do is, we have a Facebook page, put your comments on there, and, and they were just really impressed and really happy with what they saw. It was actually right in front of one of our local little restaurants downtown, and we were able to keep it away from that, and they just made them happy as could be, so. And open up to any of the citizens in the city, if you ever see anything that you'd like us to try, or anything that can help us improve, we're always open for suggestions. It doesn't have to come just from this board, we listen to anybody that has suggestions.
And any citizen can come into the firehouse on Wednesday night and visit with you guys.
Anybody. The firehouse belongs to the citizens, not to the firefighters. So the door, even though we have to lock it for security, the door's always open, there's somebody there, stop by. We like to show kids around, or show anybody what we do. Nothing to hide.
Think we need to have another city board meeting out there like we had in the past. That was informative, because we got to tour them.
Yeah, not a problem. Anytime, the, the city belongs, our city owns the building, anytime you guys want to come out. We have had some things like the day that we brought the fire truck in, we did have The firehouse belongs to the citizens, not to the firefighters. So the door, even though we have to lock it for security, the door's always open. There's somebody there, stop by. We like to show kids around or show anybody what we do. Nothing to hide.
Think we need to have another city board meeting out there like we had in the past. That was informative, because we got to tour them.
Yeah, not a problem. Anytime. The city belongs... Our city owns the building. Anytime you guys want to come out. We have had some things like the day that we brought the fire truck in. We did have the Chamber of Commerce out there.
That's kind of cool.
And had some other stuff going on, too. So the building is there and available. I try to keep it to city-type things, so we don't get a whole bunch of people requesting it to use for public events and things like that, but the building is there to use, so we're more than happy to post anything that you guys have.
Okay.
We shouldn't plan our wedding reception.
No, no wedding reception.
Is that news, Mark?
All right, Kenny, thank you so much.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Is Gary Roth in the building?
Yes.
So much for your mud on the Little Rock landing. It's all back now.
Plus a lot more. Well, you can see, we helped the Lions raise a manhole on Sixth Street. It was an old square manhole that was sinking, and they replaced all that. We did the asphalt work around it. We did some other asphalt repair work up on Jefferson Street. We opened floodgates, cleaned the mud off of Little Rock Road, and cleaned the ditches up there, which it needed again. We've been mowing and closed floodgates again. We did some cleaning work on the ditch on St. Mary's Road, and we... Martin had reported his last meeting that we have a collapsed culvert pipe under St. Mary's Road, so we'll be addressing that in the near future. Got all the bathrooms open. We put up the tent and prepared Moses Austin property for an event. Been working on trying to get the mulch work done in between rain and mowing, and been doing a little sweeping.
So, just like... Did that collapsed culvert pipe up there by Little Rock, or not collapsed, and I guess somebody installed it in the railroad?
There's been nothing done, but that's the one that goes under the tracks, and it still seeps through it very slow.
Obviously, grass grows quickly this time of year, and so they spend most of their time mowing, which sometimes kind of interferes with the routine of other services that the street department provides. So if anybody sees something that isn't getting done, give Gary or give a call.
Everybody should have a number.
But it's likely that things that normally get done on a kind of a routine basis might get skipped a week because you had to mow it while you could.
And close floodgates, they can't wait on that.
Actually, I did have a question. In regards to that, the culvert on 61 and Gettler that I kind of addressed you earlier last time, did you have any reach out to them?
Yeah, I contacted them a little about that part, and there's an issue at Klein and 61, so I've reported it to them. I don't know how.
Take five steps across the street.
Yeah.
Who did you talk to?
Sean Lomondere.
I talked to Brian, I think it's Openfoos, and he's pretty good about getting that stuff. There's stuff up here he had done last year for...
Okay, Sean's the head of our station out here, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, Brian's outside.
Anything else?
What did you get decided up there on Market Street with the driveway that's flooded?
Uh, that's another one of the deals that we just haven't been back to. We're going to try first to cut a trough on the edge of the pavement. You know, if it drained before, we're going to take like six inches out of the new pavement back down to the original to let it drain back like it did before.
Like a French drain?
Now, we still got the flooding issue up on...
Yep.
No, Ridgeway. But I understand what the... Going to have some dry weather at some time.
I've got the locates and everything done on that, so as soon as the weather lets us get it.
And a few potholes here on Market coming down here.
That's in the plan.
Up by your house.
The first part. In front of my ass is a smoddy.
Well, I know, but...
That's in the plan, the first part of next week.
I understand.
Supposed to have a dry week.
I know you're doing... You guys do a great job.
So.
But I'd like to say that the program for adjusting the manholes has really made a difference in drivability, some of those.
Where's that pipe on St. Mary's Road? Where is that at?
Uh, it's between Jim Baker and the next house to the north.
Jones?
It comes down between them houses, and there's a little concrete wall there, and then it's actually a deal where it comes through the wall and makes a turn to get to the pipe.
What comes off of Lynn?
Yeah.
And goes into a pipe that is discharged into that little ditch. The ditch is on private property, but this is on the right way, so.
So we're going to move it over in line with that.
Gary, that situation right there on the corner of Ridgeway and Virginia, you talked about a curb. Are we just waiting for it?
Well, I talked to Jokers about that, and we never got anywhere, so I'm going to get... Try to get a couple bids on it. I got another one up on the other end of Ridgeway. It's not that I forgot about.
Anything else? Thanks, Gary. Uh, we have any public comments?
To address the board one?
Yes.
Any time, now?
Now's your time.
I'm just here to address the board concerning this.
Put your name, please.
My name is Karen Stupi. I'm a city resident. With this article that was written by Randy Ruzikia, I just want to say, I'm here to support the letter that was written by Randy Ruzikia, who wrote this article concerning the tourism budget for our city. He hit the nail on the head with this one, and it goes along with the whole Prop P that was passed on April 2nd, 2019. This is one of the reasons I am so upset as a city taxpayer that Prop P was put on the ballot in the first place. You, as the alderman and the mayor, should have cut budgets, salaries, and found alternative ways within the budget to give these police officers a substantial raise instead of automatically putting this on the ballot on April 2nd, 2019. And I'm asking, as a city taxpayer, and not asking me, as a city taxpayer, to fund these raises. This all stems back to the fact that the county deputies received a substantial pay increase in January of 2019. Due to that fact, Sheriff Stolzer raised the revenues in 2018 to give his police officers their raises. He did not ask the taxpayers to fund these raises for his officers. I know Prop P was passed by the voters, but the fact is, it should have never been put on the ballot to begin with. Let's just say the scenario that Prop P did not pass. I know for a fact those budgets would have been cut to give those officers a raise, and alternative measures would have been made to give those officers a pay increase that, and that's what I'm saying, should have been done with in the first place. I know you're thinking that I am against the police force. I am not against the police force at all. I support our police force. I'm upset with the whole way this Prop P was proposed and handled. I just feel that you, as the alderman and mayor, should have cut your budgets and salaries and found alternative ways to give these police officers a raise, instead of using the strategy of, oh, let's put this on the ballot and see if the voters pass this first, so we don't have to cut our budgets, and let's just push it on to the taxpayer again. I can say here this evening to voice my concerns today that me, as a taxpayer, I should be more involved in our city government. You know what? Shame on me for not being more involved in our city government and being concerned about it. As a city taxpayer, I should be concerned. I am concerned about our crumbling streets and sidewalks. My neighborhood streets are a mess. I drive to and from work on Cedar Street, which is an absolute obstacle course, dodging potholes and areas on my street that's an actual mess. Our streets and sidewalks are in utter disgrace. We are a national park, and now to have tourists walking around on streets and sidewalks that are in utter disarray. I agree with Mr. Ruzikia. We can't keep up with the current situation of our budgets. Your budgets are living on a champagne lifestyle and on a beer budget income. We need to focus on bringing industry, stores, and restaurants to our town to generate revenue. We need to keep our youth here, but we must first have jobs to keep them and... so that they can stay here and live here. We need to concentrate on this to move our town forward. I just feel like we are paying some current administration and other city employees, we are paying some pretty substantial salaries, and I feel like I'm not seeing any improvement as far as industry or stores or anything moving into our community. I have lived here for 55 years, and there were more things to do in this town back in the 1980, the late 70s and early 80s. We had a movie theater, we had a bowling alley, and we had things to do. I don't understand why surrounding communities are growing like Festus, Farmington, Perryville, and St. Jen stays stagnant. Thank God for the expansion of the community center, the sports complex, the challenger field, playground, tennis courts, and the water park. I am praying that that water park goes along with the theme of build it and they will come. Restaurants, stores, movie theaters, entertainment, yes, we need to preserve our past, but we need to seek a future, a future for our children and our grandchildren. They deserve that, not a town that's going to become a ghost town. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. My name is Karen Stupi, and I am a St. Genevieve taxpayer, city taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anybody... Is there anybody else, any public comments? Okay. Takes us to the consent agenda. Going to hand out some... Thank you very much.
Will you approve what the consent agenda?
I have a question, sorry. Martin, could you just confirm that the liquor license that was submitted and included in our packet is a little outdated, and that the Sunday... the restaurant portion of the Sunday sales, that that is no longer required?
Yes, that was changed by the state. We never adjusted our application form to reflect that change.
Okay, so they are not required to have a certain percentage of their sales be from prepared?
Yes.
In order to be open on Sunday? Thank you. Can we update those forms?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance.
Great, that would be good, too, I guess, right? That was all I had, thank you. I'll second.
Call and favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Takes us to Old Business. This is the second reading of Bill Number 4279, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Schedule III parking restrictions, Table 3-E, handicap parking.
Motion to approve.
Second. May roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4279 now becomes ordinance 4210.
Thank you very much. Takes us to the second reading of Bill Number 4280, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city of St. Genevieve to enter into a participation agreement for Missouri Chamber Federation Benefit Plan Trust.
So we're... Hold on a second. So we're looking to work on the insurance situation moving forward, correct? We want to move forward with this and work on that next year?
We're going to have to, yes. Do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4280 now becomes ordinance 4211.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4281, second reading of an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article II, definition, Section 405.020, Article III, districts and district regulations, Section 405.080-C-1, general commercial district regulations, Sections 405.130-I-2, heavy industrial district regulations, and Article V, supplementary and special uses and regulations as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
One more question, just moving forward. So has anybody changed their mind as far as possibly willing to consider the medical marijuana dispensaries differently than cultivation? I didn't think so.
I feel like we should adopt this now because this is so new, and it's kind of been all over the place, especially as far as the state is concerned, that we readdress it once some of these businesses have been established, and we see that they're going well, and they're following the regulations, and then maybe we can look at bringing in... not being as restrictive.
Well, my concern is just kind of being behind the... not necessarily behind everyone else, but in such a small city, obviously, we're very limited of where dispensaries can go. And I know we haven't seen any interest heading in that direction, but I just wanted to leave the biggest possibility of someone possibly... you know, maybe they get shut down in Perryville, or maybe they shut down just in this area, that it's possible that they would have an option here. The more areas that dispensary... that are available for a dispensary, the better shot that we could potentially have some sort of increased industry in this matter. So I know it's not seemingly heading in that direction, but as far as there's no people looking as far as dispensary goes in this area that we know of, but I'm just trying to express the concern for the possibility of it happening, and it just seems to me, looking into it, like this is a... just overburden, basically. And once again, it's my opinion. I completely respect that, and I understand.
So you want to regulate the dispensaries more?
No, less.
So, C1...
Basically, just lessen the thousand-foot.
My understanding is, we can adopt this, and we can always do that. We can always come back to the board.
My concern is it will be too late.
Right.
That's why I bring this up. We're talking about... I know, like I said last meeting, I know this isn't an ideal industry to possibly bring here, but we're talking about growth, and trying to be fairly progressive in this area, so the potential of... dispensaries, to me, just seem far less harmless from what I can see in the research that I've seen, you know, can tell, compared to the cultivation situation. I completely understand, I'm on par with that. I agree. The dispensary, to me, is just like a pharmacy, essentially, in my mind.
And I get that, and I understand that, but we still have an obligation to the community and to the city to protect others involved, you know? And it's specifically with your schools and your kids, and we've got to be mindful of that, so... and I'm not saying I don't know enough about it, and I understand with the dispensaries, but I think we... I suggest we go ahead with this, and we can always shrink. I would... I don't know if that's going to keep somebody from coming in town or what.
But I didn't think I'd get...
Well, I hear what you're saying, but my concern is... Oh, and I'm trying to be open-minded about this as well, and I'm a teacher, so I'm not really open-minded about this. But I'm trying. But if we went to that extent, then we couldn't go back.
Correct.
And so, I'm just saying, I think that the way they're... This keeps our options open if we start with this and move forward. I do hear what you're saying, and...
Right, and you know, like I said, it's... the chances of a dispensary probably coming here are very limited.
You don't know.
And there's just plenty of spaces that that's allowed. Especially in the more commercial area.
The more the merrier. That's all I'm trying to provide, is some sort of potential of someone coming in here and giving us some ideal revenue. But, like I said, I'm just expressing some opinions that I still had on the situation, and I completely understand your guys' conservative behind this. I just were trying to be as progressive on this, which not at words we hear me say too often, but...
Making a decision over where you think the highest possibility of problems are, and I...
I'm not saying there's going to be problems. I don't project a be...
I don't think there will be.
I don't either, but there's plenty of places in this where we can... you know, where they can set up, plenty of places in town, so.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Did we have a motion?
Jimmy made the motion.
I made the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now I need roll call votes, please.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
No.
Six yes, one no, one absent, Bill Number 4281 now becomes ordinance 4212.
Thank you very much. Takes us to the second reading of Bill Number 4282, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a, into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission municipal agreement for signage and installation, the purple hard signs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, Bill Number 4282 now becomes ordinance 4213.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill Number 4283, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 205, animals, Article III, chickens, Section 205.200, keeping of chickens, allow on all detached, single-family lots, it sets forth below.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was asked this question, does this include no roosters?
No roosters is still the rule.
Then I, okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
What the, just the one question, what's the fee for this? Is there still an annual fee, is that correct?
Ten dollars, I think, is it?
And why nine? Is nine just a...
Well, that was just, I talked to someone about this, he wanted more chicken.
Right.
They said nine, something.
Well, he said they, they knew of another municipality that allowed nine.
Okay, that's fair. I, that's, I'm fine with it either way, I just was curious.
That's a good point, speaking of, let's go on ten, or eight. It takes us to Bill Number 4284, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article II, definition, Section 405.020, and Article V supplementary and special uses and regulations, regulations as set forth below. Motion to approve.
Got a question?
Yeah, me too.
Do we always wait, do we have to have a second in order to open discussion?
Supposedly.
Second.
So we have a first and a second, now we have some discussion.
You know, how many properties is this gonna involve? Can I, can I answer with a question that's probably better asked before? Where is this a problem?
Uh, this was a specific problem about four months ago in Ward Two.
I was leading up to that. Oh, sorry, I thought mine was about a precursor, so I, kind of, but, I mean, are we trying to deal with one property, or are we trying to deal with multiple properties, are we talking about...
Well, what was requested was something to limit the number of vehicles on a residential property, which there's nothing in code to deal with that, operable vehicles.
Could, could you kind of refresh me on that situation, please?
Sure, there was a property in Ward Two where there was about, I would say, seven operable licensed vehicles parked across multiple parts of the front and side yard that was a complaint of several surrounding neighbors, and if they were inoperable, damaged, defective, unlicensed, you know, we've asked people to move or address vehicles for all those reasons, but these vehicles were all started, operable, licensed, and still had complaints from surrounding neighbors, um, and a couple of aldermen asked for a solution. I apologize if it didn't come quicker, but, this is what came from research I did of surrounding communities and other ordinances that address this issue. It really addresses two things, the number of vehicles and where you can park them.
But you emphasize on operable, so if they're inoperable?
That's already covered in nuisance.
We have those before.
So you can't put a car on blocks in your yard? You can if you're really working on it, and you can get it done within two weeks, but if you're just putting it there because you're using it for parts, or because you have nowhere else to go with it, that's covered under nuisance ordinance.
So is this still an issue at that property?
I would say, the neighbors would say so.
Well, what's the ratio, is this one driver per vehicle, or is this one driver...
I don't think there's a ratio here, I went with five, I sent you guys an email asking if you would like to see six or four, but five or six of the, of the cities or municipalities I've seen do this, that's the number, there's no ratio, it's just five.
Me, meaning, I mean, in the property question, are there seven drivers operating...
I have no idea how many folks live there, I would say minimally three. There's three folks that live there.
And you have, that, it says unless further restricted by the property owner, I'm sorry, I, that's not what I thought, I found something, but, so is this, if this is someone who is renting, who is ultimately responsible for that? Do we contact the renter, do we contact the landlord?
Uh, as far as, if it's a rental property and a renter has too many vehicles there...
Yes.
I would send a letter to both, ultimately both are responsible.
Okay, thank you.
So in a multifamily situation, I mean, this doesn't cover...
It's, it's per, it's per residence or dwelling, I believe.
So it wouldn't cover an apartment building?
It would. It would cover an apartment building. Dwelling unit, so if you have an apartment building where you have one person living there who has six vehicles, and the owner tells me that, this would allow us to cover that, but most apartment buildings in their lease cover how many vehicles, so that was where it would be unless further restricted.
So is this the only issue that we know of, or has this been a reoccurring issue? Not necessarily this property, but other properties around the town?
Uh, there's been at least two that I've had complaints on.
Two including this, or two plus this?
Two total.
Two total.
So it is not a lot, but there's nothing in ordinance to address it either.
But if you have to live next to one of these, it's possible.
So why not be proactive and get something on the books that at least addresses it?
Another question I had, the, the no more than forty percent of the front side area may be paved, what's the reasoning behind that? Basically, it's section B there.
Well, I mean, if you don't stick something in there like that, and we say you have to have your cars or vehicles on a paved surface...
Right.
What's to prevent someone from paving their entire, and typically, we don't allow that to begin with because we have lot coverage maximums in our ordinance already, this simply limits the amount of paved surface.
So is this the same as the lot coverage maximum, or...
It's at the, it's at the max. Most residential, um, lots are thirty, thirty-five percent, but they can go up to forty percent.
I don't think lot covers...
I think it covers anything that's not impermeable.
I disagree.
Do you disagree, Martin?
It's buildings.
I believe it's structures. I, I read it, and I, I didn't see anything.
It's structures.
That's why I asked, um, that's why I brought that up, I just, uh, guess I didn't understand the, the reasoning behind it. I mean, my yard's fairly big, and I don't know what forty percent would be, I'd have to do some math on it, but I, of course, this, I'm obviously biased here, but I'm considering paving a, a section of, of, around my, my yard, and I don't know, it would probably be under forty percent.
Forty percent is quite a lot of space.
Right.
A typical drive-by, two-car garage would probably be about ten to twelve percent of your front yard. It's a first reading, but if you have questions, again, I sent it out to see if you had any feedback, I could make changes, but again, this is what we brought forward tonight.
You know, my question was basically on the scope of the vehicles that you covered.
Mm-hmm.
You know, two vehicles, a motorcycle, a camping trailer, and a boat, and you're right there.
You're at your five. But, and again, if this isn't what we want, that's fine, but as I drive around town, which I do a ton, I don't see a lot of places that have this number or more visible. And I guess visible's not worked into this, but what we're trying to do is limit the number of vehicles, I mean, the complaints that we're getting are for folks that can see them all, they're not in a garage, they're either parked on a yard, or gravel, or driveway.
Right.
So they're on sight, like, they're not impeding somebody's ability to use their own property?
I would say that the neighbors would say it's impeding their ability to enjoy their property.
Sure.
But they're, they're not impeding traffic or anything like that.
This doesn't cover any vehicles that are in a closed space. Get as many as you can get in your garage. Oh, that's different. And...
I still have a question on the pavement part. So is it structured, or is it paved?
I'll have to go check, you were creating an uncertainty. If you had asked me this question before we had this discussion, I would've said it's structures. That's how, that's how I read it.
That's the way I've always...
That's, that's how I read it.
I mean, to be part of that ordinance is to decrease the amount of stormwater runoff, so it would limit the amount of impermeable surface, but it may be structures.
Would that need amended? I'm not convinced that's...
True.
Right.
That's the only justification of the lot coverage issue.
Agreed.
So if that's the case, would this need amended?
I think so.
I want you to table this to the next meeting, give it some thought, and come back with your recommended changes at the next meeting. It's not a priority item.
I'll make the motion to table.
But emails would be much, much appreciated.
Well, I knew all of these questions.
You did call.
Thank you.
I thought all of these questions would be very relevant to the chamber settings, I apologize.
That's right.
So in this scenario, we have one property owner, how many separate complaints from other neighboring...
For that one property owner?
For that one property.
Three.
Okay, so three distinct separate complaints for the one...
Three separate owners that live around this owner.
Okay.
Multiple complaints.
And pointed out in the motion, the second's already been made, so, somebody had to draw that, and you wanted to try to table it, or would you just go ahead?
Just have the first reading, and then...
Let's have the first reading.
Let's do the first reading, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and have some more, you know, we're not gonna do anything, it's not gonna be official until we do the second reading, so, we have a motion and a, and a second, so, all in favor of this first reading?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
I would like to oppose that as well.
We have five to two, so, motion carries. All righty. That says, Bill Number 4285, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of St. Genevieve Police Department and the V Academy, a Division of Savat, Seven Learning Systems Incorporated, for an online police training in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and sixty dollars. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. In other business, we have to approve the annual liquor license due July 1st, 2019, if everybody's on that list.
I make a motion to approve those, sir.
I'll second.
Have we had any complaints about any of these businesses?
Okay.
Jason, do you, do you know a minute?
Okay, I stand.
Thank you.
So we have a first and a second?
I thought we did.
Do we have a first and a second?
I first.
I was second.
Yes, Gary and I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. But this time, unless there's any communication between the two of us, we need to, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
For the purpose of, Mr. Mayor?
For the purpose, the purpose of real estate.
I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a roll call?
Real estate.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderwoman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.